Okay. Next, we have a five-year housing strategy, Darren.
Good evening, once again, Mayor Dibball and Councilmembers. Darren Gale, your Deputy City Manager, Economic Growth and Public Affairs. So tonight, I have the pleasure of speaking to you about a housing plan and a housing strategy. This is an effort that's being led across all departments at the city and also will include our development partners and home builders. So, real briefly, I think that these numbers here give a little bit of a background of where we were and where we are today. In 2004, the city issued 991 single-family residential permits, and in 2017, we issued 38. So, there's a lot of questions of, well, why? Obviously, the economy has changed. Cities like Roseville, Lincoln, Elk Grove, Sacramento, and many communities in the Sacramento region have continued to build a significant amount of homes each and every year. I want to make sure that people understand, these lots, so these homes that were built, are all what we call pre-recession lots. These lots were entitled pre-recession, and many of the times, and most of the times, there was already significant amount of infrastructure that was already placed on these projects. So curb, gutter, sidewalk sometimes, definitely water and sewer had been installed. A great example are the projects around Yuba City that have been built were all pre-recession lots. We only have one new project, and that's Valencia Estates up on the north side of town, 39 lots that is currently being developed by Inner West. But, more than the majority of homes that are being built in the entire Sacramento region are being done by pre-recession lots, lots that were approved before the recession, and many times, there were improvements made to that. If there weren't improvements made to it, the property was usually sold for, you know, people like to say 10 to 20 cents on the dollar, much less than the actual value in the property. Another issue related to why has the city of Yuba City not seen more development is, most of our development, when it does occur, will happen on the west side of our sphere of influence, and there's not the utilities there fully to serve all those projects. In addition, and to add to that, is we don't have large landowners. Most of our parcels are owned by very small parcels. And when I say small parcel, sometimes down 5, 10 acres, but let's just say 20 or 30 acres or 40 acres is considered a large parcel. When you go through the Sacramento region, you literally have one landowner or a couple landowners that control hundreds of acres, if not thousands of acres, which makes the issue a little bit more complexed. So there are a few large acre landowners. And then, one of the new issues that we've learned about from talking with home builders is there used to be a difference in the construction cost for Sacramento and Yuba City. There was a gap change, and obviously, a home in Yuba City needs to sell for less than a home in the Sacramento region for people to want to make that extra commute. As a result, the city is moving forward with a residential building guideline, what we call Yuba City's Future Foundations. And I'm going to talk a little bit about that this evening first. In this plan that we'll bring back to the City Council for approval at a meeting, hopefully in October, these are some of the items that'll be discussed, and then obviously, any of the items that the council adds this evening. First, you know, really, our regional setting, we're ideally located, we're still a small-town atmosphere, but we have a close to 150,000 people that live within 15 miles of the intersection of 99 and 20, and we're still an ag-based community, very much that, you know, the sundowner type of place. You can go to many of these cities that I've mentioned, they still don't have that small-town atmosphere, so it's definitely a place that we know people want to move, we need to make sure that we can get home builders building. Additionally, we're a regional economic hub, our commercial, retail, medical, culture, entertainment. You know, this is a map, I think, that we've shared often, we've recently updated. That's a significant amount of growth along the Highway 99 and 20 corridor. So this is Highway 99, this is Highway 20, sorry for the shaky hands, but there's just, there's really a significant amount of non-residential development we've seen, and obviously, we want to add to that. And we know that more rooftops equals even more retail. So, where are some lands available? This is a map of the city, which shows either approved or tentative maps, or maps that have been submitted. One that's not on there is the Lincoln East Specific Plan. I'll just kind of point that out, the Lincoln East Specific Plan is this area, which has an approved specific plan. I listed out seven of the projects that are on here, there's more, but I think these are key ones. Sutter Heritage, down on Walton and Smith Avenue, it is owned by the Chohann family locally. It was approved back in 2008, and we'd love to see that project be entitled, or sorry, to be developed. And we definitely think it's one of those that we have, we have a chance. We have Harder Estates North, 73 lots within the Harder Specific Plan. We have Tom here representing Harder. So, these are just some great projects where some land is available, and we want home builders to know about these parcels. Development impact fees, within this plan, we're going to state, here's what our development impact fees are today. This does not include our infill impact fee, which we've reduced significantly to encourage development within, you know, the existing city, you know, single-lot development. One of the things we're putting into this plan is that the city's open to all financing tools. We want home builders and developers to understand that the city, we're not pushing them away, we're open arms, we want them to come and present whatever type of financing options they might have that can work for them. Obviously, it still needs the pencil for the developer, but also, the city can't lose money doing the project. So, one is land-secure financing. Some cities aren't extremely excited about that. Obviously, we would love for developers to come in and use that. Currently, we're approved for CFD, which is the Community Facilities District. The city also has what's called the skip program, which is a little bit more affordable way of setting up a CFD. Normally, for a CFD, you need to have a large area. A skip program lets you do it on a smaller size. And then, the BOLD program, which we helped bring back to the council here in October, in October, is similar to skip, but it's a brand-new program that some of the home builders are using down in Placer County, and we'll be presenting that to the council for consideration. Obviously, any type of private financing, some cost-sharing reimbursement agreements where developers might have to place in some infrastructure, and then they can be reimbursed, and then area benefit and zona benefits. We're willing to consider everything. Just before the meeting, Tom asked me if we had put on enhanced infrastructure finance districts, which are called EIFDs, be something we would consider. West Sacramento has been the only city to successfully use that. Part of the problem is, is that they have a different type of revenue, they receive a significant amount more revenue off property tax in the 40 to 45 cent range, where we're 16 cents on the dollar. So, not as much capacity to be able to use it, but we would love to consider it, and that will be part of this plan for any type of home builder or developer that's coming in. Infrastructure, we have a couple maps. On the left is our wastewater collection and treatment system, and on the right is our system for water and where the lines are. You know, we want, we don't want the builders having to call the city and ask, hey, where's your water lines and where's your sewers lines? Here's a map, here's where it is, we want to see it in our city, and we're definitely willing to work. So, a little bit about an action plan. First, we're going to begin to have quarterly meetings with our local builders and developers. We plan, our first one, we'll be sending out an email tomorrow for the first Monday of the month, and then we'll start doing that on a quarterly basis. Myself and your Development Services Director, Arnaldo Rodriguez, have gone down to South Placer County, where many of the home builders are actually located, and started what's called a road show. Just talking a little bit about some of the properties, we are also going to be partnering with First American Title, who represents a lot of the large home builders, to actually throw an event in South Placer County and provide all the information, all the property owner contact information, what's been approved, and what's the timelines. We also want to identify underdeveloped infill properties. Councilmember Buckland, as you talked about, on Bridge Street, those are a couple of the parcels. And one of the things that was brought up amongst the group by our Development Services Director is, could we actually create an architectural rendering and building plans for an infill lot? So, we know more or less what the lot sizes are throughout that part of the city. We can probably create something like a two-door style home, three bedrooms, two baths, either an attached or detached garage, and if someone wanted to build on their parcel, we'd say, here you go, here's a full set of plans that you can come in and use for that parcel, which saves them a significant amount of money. It's just one of the barriers to seeing projects develop. And really, we see that on both, maybe, a property that has not been developed or that underdeveloped parcel in getting people to come. Obviously, we want to encourage development adjacent to existing utilities, water and sewer. We will encourage phased improvement projects. As we've talked to home builders, the national home builders, they're not interested in coming to town and building or taking 200 or 300 or 400 lots, they're talking about 20, 25, 30. That's a big change from 2004, where literally, they wanted to take, you know, a development site of 300, 400 lots. They're definitely on the smaller side. And really, this final point is one of the things that is going to be really key of this action plan, which is, the city's open for business. We want to sit down and work with any developer or builder. I love developers, I love home builders even more. Developers are speculating on land multiple, a lot of times, we would love to sit down with that home builder to figure out, hey, how does this work? And we'll sit down with our landowners also, but we're open for business. If someone comes in with a tentative map, there's no other jurisdiction that can process a map in a timely manner as the city of Yuba City can. And we've proven that on multiple projects. And obviously, we want to see additional retail developments occur, and we're very excited to have the council talk a little bit about this this evening. We'll bring this back in October, probably right after we have that meeting with our local builders and developers. And, like I said, it's definitely something we need. There's going to be really very specific actions we can take and report back to the City Council. I do know that we have a couple people in the audience that might want to talk about this. I know we have a home builder here, or used to be a home builder, Virgil, still used to, wants to be a home builder in Yuba City. And, you know, one of the things that everybody says is, well, your impact fees are too high. That's one portion of an equation. And so, if we can sit down with the home builder and work through the process, and if we need to come back, great, we can come back to the City Council and bring something. But, you know, I think the thing that all of us hear is, well, impact fees are too high. There's much more that's affecting the price of a home, construction cost, cost of the land, entitlement cost, time, and so, we definitely want to sit down with those home builders and developers and work through that. And we'll have a housing plan that we can hand them that's been endorsed by the City Council, and includes information from our local home builders and developers. So I can answer any questions that you might have. I know Diana and Arnaldo can answer any technical questions also, and like I said, there might be a couple of comments from the public on this.
Great, thank you, Darren. We'll bring it back to council for any discussion.
Good, Mayor. Derek, can you go back to the slide, the finance, I think it was financing, and a couple of things on that. What is the BOLD program? Could you explain that, please?
So, BOLD is, it's similar to what's called a Community Facilities District. So, basically, what it allows a builder to do is make improvements, and instead of having to pay cash upfront, they're able to finance it against the property, so the homeowner will pay for it over a 20- or 30-year period of the life of their, giving their home. So, you know, as a home builder, maybe needs to put in a million dollars of sewer improvements. What they can do, they can finance a half-million of that, or the full million, and then that's passed on to the home builder through a land-based financing. BOLD is just, they manage the program, just like skip, it's, I forget exactly what BOLD stands for, but it's just another way of doing a finance district on a home. Many people have what's called Melrose.
Similar to that.
It's similar to that. BOLD is just the program that it's actually managed around, that home builders are using now.
Just to clarify, you just mentioned it was passed on to the home builder.
Sorry, the homeowner.
Okay, all right. And then, Eric, can you elaborate on area benefit slash zona benefit? I'm not familiar with that.
Absolutely. One second. So, area benefits, the purpose of an area benefit is to make a provision for assessing properties as a condition of approval of a map. So, when a project is approved, there's conditions placed upon it, conditions of the development approval, or as a condition of issuing a building permit. It may be established so long as the construction of public improvements provided by the zona benefit is required by subsequent developments. So, Diana might be able to give you the non-technical, I'm reading from kind of our draft, zona benefit, unless you had an additional question, I'm sorry.
That's okay, that's why we're here. I do have an additional question.
So it has to be a public improvement as part of a zona benefit.
Okay, all right. You want me to ask my other question of you, or would you like Diana to step up and elaborate real quick?
Yeah, I think Diana can answer that question better.
All right, we'll do that. What's that?
Put it on the spot. Often, if you build a public improvement that is, benefits a specific area, similar to our lighting and landscape maintenance districts, you create zones of benefit to identify which properties would then reimburse for that specific improvement.
Okay, all right, that makes sense then. And then, one last thing. You mentioned impact fees.
Yes.
And I completely agree, I hear it often, that our impact fees are too high, and that a lot of folks, assuming that the five of us, think that we are Roseville. We don't, obviously, but however, if our fees are not proportionate to the perceived benefit that folks down in Roseville have, and if they're too high, as a matter of opinion, are we, is there any, I understand that our fees are perhaps, at least some of them are based on studies or information that was sometimes even a decade old. Do we have any plans in place, we're getting things in order in order to proceed with the 1600 study?
Not at this time, however, the impact fee study has been updated based upon construction price over time. So it's not like it had, that it sat stagnant. Maybe Diana has a different answer.
All right.
But I will say, to build a road in Roseville costs the same amount as it does to build a road in Yuba City.
Thank you for saying that, that's important for folks to understand. I would like to just have something where we have a slide here, I'm not going to make you go to it, however, you listed what our impact fees are, at least most of them, I'm assuming. For the folks who get frustrated by that, and I completely understand why they would be, that's what the fees are, but if we had a way to communicate to folks, not only what they are, but why they are, I think that would help answer a lot of questions, in my opinion.
Great, well, we can definitely put that together and show very specifically, 70% of your impact fee is roads and parks.
Right, right, thank you.
All right, so I'm going to amend Darren's response slightly. For water, we are currently finalizing our water master plan update, so through that, we've gone through, established the improvements necessary to serve future development. We'll then be able to spread that over the developmental properties within the sphere of influence to come up with a new connection fee. The connection fee covers the large transmission mains, and then also, the water treatment plant. As soon as we're done with the water master plan, we're then going to shift gears and update the wastewater master plan. So, within the next 18 months, I would also anticipate that we'd have updated connection fees for wastewater as well.
All right, thank you very much, Diana.
So, let me just clarify, there's two different types of fees. There's connection fees, which are water and sewer. The other ones are called impact fees under a different law. And if you notice, we collect fees for levy, there's a fee for school districts, $2.63 a square foot, there's a Sutter County fee that we collect of almost $4,000. So, we've, we put up all of the fees, so that everyone knows that. Also, one of the things that I didn't mention, but it's one of the things that we're trying to, trying to work with, is impact fees, some cities require additional improvements of the developer, whereas, maybe it's fully funded by impact fees. So it's apples to oranges as you look at a community and how they do projects. And that's one of the things that we're trying to look at, the full cost of a development project, not just one person saying, hey, your impact fees are too high.
I think that's a lot where it comes into why, how we got to that number. It will answer a lot of questions and hopefully alleviate at least some of the frustration that's out there.
And I, full disclosure, I was not working at the city when the impact fees were adopted, I was actually working for home builders, and I sat across the table doing my best to get the fees as low as possible.
Sure you did.
And, so, I definitely understand these fees very much, and I understand.
As long as we're fair and reasonable, and we can justify the numbers, we're good, but some folks have a perception that we're not. So if we can put some effort into helping them out, I appreciate it.
And I'll show consistency that way as well.
Through the mayor.
Yes.
So Darren, I agree with you on, one of the driving factors of home costs here is land value. There's also a perception by current landowners that they need to look 10 years out and try to realize a recoup of what they would have lost if they'd have stayed in crop, or any type of farming operation. Whereas, in talking to individuals in Folsom, where building is pretty robust right now on the outskirts, that land is, at best, rock strewn, poorly utilized for grazing in the past, it is identified as moonscape, even by the city fathers down there, and it sells for a very reasonable rate, and it's owned by large landowners, just like you were talking about. So they're able to bring in large parcels at any given time. So that's, that is one of the driving factors here in Yuba City, is the cost of property itself. One of the things that, as we're talking about our impact fees, one of the things that intrigues me in speaking with some of the developers is the concept of opening up more opportunity for gated communities here in Yuba City, where they are the ones responsible for hooking, putting everything in, whether it's going to be sidewalks, curb, gutter, all the infrastructure. And the policing model within gated communities seems to be a little bit less because it's more neighborhood-bound. So there's less of an overall impact, with the exception of increased traffic off of those residents. So, with that whole concept, and then being able to drive that through an HOA, would that be something that would be feasible here in our community to start looking at more gated opportunities?
So, recently, the Planning Commission, within the last couple of years, approved the Faith Christian, we call it the Faith Christian map, since they were the applicant. I know that they're working with a home builder in that is a gated community, do you remember, 10, 17?
It's 10 lots, but they're going to reapply.
So 10, and they want to go to 17 lots, and still remain gated?
17.
Yeah, so there's definitely, and I know there's a property owner in the audience who's talked about a gated project also, that he would like to see developed on some land that he owns.
And then, the other suggestion that has been brought to my attention from North Natomas, from Vice Mayor Ashby down in Sacramento, is looking at narrowly-connected triplex units to build, to bring up density on some of those properties, and allowing for more of a sloped approach into the single-story residences in any given development. So, narrowly-connected, meaning that they share commonly either bathroom walls, hall walls, for just a very short distance, and again, most of these are subjected to an HOA environment.
Okay.
Any other comments?
Yeah. Hey Darren, in this presentation, we didn't mention anything about affordable housing. Is that part of our game plan for this five-year strategy? Because I know we do need to have some affordable housing in our community. There's a lot of folks that would love to have it, and is that part, like I said, is that part of our game plan?
So there will be a part about affordable housing. Obviously, we leave the construction of government-developed housing to our regional housing authority, but we would love to see more affordable housing developers come to town. The issue, so residents understand, is many of those are financed through tax, credit, bond financing. The city of Yuba City is in the same pool of funds as the city of Los Angeles, San Jose, Sacramento, all the large cities. That's why there's been some developments around here in some of the more rural communities. They hit a lower threshold, so there's a little bit more possibility for them to get some funding, but it's definitely something we want to see and encourage. But from what I've been told by the affordable housing developer, unless they can qualify for those 4% or 9% tax credit bond deals, it's very difficult to try to build without those. But that's definitely something, we definitely want to be part of that, and it will be discussed in the plan.
Thank you, Darren.
Any other comments?
Yes, to the mayor. Kind of going to take off on that, affordable housing, but I'm going to be going with what's called market-rate affordable housing, non-government assisted. I've been, I know that we do have a project, or was one, built behind the 7-Eleven on the corner of Jones and Lincoln, that was some zero lot lines, and they had an HOA developed specifically for the front yards, so that nobody could leave their front yards looking ratty, and so that has been very successful. That neighborhood looks great still, and it's been there for a while. So, something affordable rate, which would be some changes of moving it down to, instead of 45-foot frontages, going down to 40-foot by 80 or 90 deep. We have a lack of homes that are in the, say, 2,000, I mean, 1,000, or 1,100 to 1,200 square foot, up to 1,600. These regular lots of 5,000 and 6,000 feet, they are building, the builders are saying we have to maximize our investment. So they build 2,500 to 3,500 square-foot homes, and two stories on them, with five-bedroom, four-bathroom, living room, dining room, and nobody can afford that. In fact, when they were building them, the people couldn't afford it either, and that's where the creative financing came from, so they could get them into those McMansions, and that's part of the cause of the collapse in the first place. They weren't building affordable housing for people to live in. They were building McMansions, and people were just wanting to get into them. I was part of the commercial construction market and watched it happen. I even ragged on some of them about, what are you doing this for? And they would just say, well, we have to maximize our investment. Well, look what, look what they did. They created a situation where there are very few market-rate affordable housings available for young families, young married couples to go into, get their kids going, move up to the next level, move up to the next level. There's a huge gap in that area. I used to do metal stud framing drywall, and started out on houses, and we used to build those size of homes in this area. But during that one time, they weren't going on. So, I think we need to look at narrower lot size, slightly less deep, to where the 40% coverage, or square footage coverage, would be of a maximum size of a, about a 1,440 square-foot home, and that's where if you do 40-foot frontage, 90-foot deep, 3,600 square-foot lot, you can only put a 1,440 square-foot home. That's it, that would be the maximum. No two-stories. On, that could be debatable, too, if we wanted to do zero lot lines, two stories, joining, I know I'm getting a little more into the weeds and the construction style, but also where the garages would join, where the one side of the property where it would have the five-foot in between, so the zero lot line would be a firewall-type situation. Many of these things need to be reconsidered. And then, having HOAs help to keep the places looking nice, allowing that. Some of them could be gated or not, because the one that's, that I know of, is not gated, and it's a very successful plan. The other one is, is I keep getting approached about this, tiny homes. Most of them are being placed on mobile home areas, or RV parks, or something like that on wheels. Well, I'm, there's a lot of singles, people that are married, don't plan to have kids, seniors wanting to size down to where they can afford to have someplace where they have a place to live, and then they can travel, and it's small, they come back to, there's a lot of them that do that. And the idea of actually creating a tiny home, I guess, park, which would have the same amenities as a normal complex. same amenities as a normal complex, it most likely would be gated because of the style, but to have it to where they own the land, they own the tiny home, and they also take, pay into an HOA that takes care of the infrastructure, but it would be a home ownership. And to stop, one of the things I wouldn't agree with, if this does go forward, they're not for renting, they're for home ownership. And that would have to be something that would be done through the HOA, not through our restrictions, but I'm not sure how that would be. Because you can put a tiny home on a thirty-wide-foot frontage, ten-foot setback, seventy feet deep, and you can get, let's see, at forty percent coverage, eight hundred and forty square feet, and at forty-five percent coverage, nine hundred and forty-five square feet. That's big enough for a nice two-bedroom, two-bathroom, large living, I mean, that's a huge amount of room for a two-bedroom. And then, that's just, I would really like to look into the tiny homes to be added into it. And that's, I keep getting asked that question. I know there's also a need for the larger lots, especially down towards Sacramento area, end of Uba City, where people would be commuting, because there's still an interest to commute back and forth on nice homes. And that's another item that's been, been talked to me about in the last six months. So, we're on, I think we're on the cusp, the edge of actually breaking loose, and actually getting some quality development starting. Like you said, though, it's going to be the twenty, forty, fifty home developments, not the two, three, four hundred like we had in the past. That's just kind of some ideas, and having come out of the industry, I understand what they're talking about. Thank you.
So, just to kind of wrap some of the discussion I've heard, is I think it's the diversity of products across the board.
Yes.
And through the mayor.
You put those in a couple of words there.
And one of the things that you may want to look at, and especially as Councilmember Cleveland is talking about tiny homes and things like that, is the state's position through AB 2162, that really requires that we not take any, we have to open up the options for supportive housing in the state of California. So, that bill has moved through, and I think it, right now, is waiting for the governor's signature. So, I believe it's going to make it through.
Any other ideas, concepts? You got all that, Darren?
I did, I got great notes.
Okay, all right. So, action? Well, we had our discussion, so the direction is, go ahead and move forward.
Madam mayor, I know that Mr. Gale mentioned there might be comments that want to be submitted by members, unless you already offered that.
Yeah.
Open that.
I don't have any cards, but if anybody does want to speak on it, you may do so. Yes. Go ahead and go up to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, my name is Dorothy Figueroa, I live at 988 Bog Road, and some of you may know me. I live on a very busy street, Bog Road, where thirty-five is not the speed limit, sixty-five, seventy-five miles is. I know that we're getting ready to have houses built in back of us on beautiful farming land. That house is not only the best peaches, walnuts, and other things, but some beautiful species of red-tailed hawks, rabbits, beautiful birds. My question is, are you going to, as much as you honor the person who's going to be building, are you going to meet with all the people who live around us, that the building is going to be taking control of them pretty soon? And the rat race, and the craziness, are we going to be as important as those single-family dwellings, two-story mansions, eight houses on an acre? All their fees that come with it, are we going to be remembered? Are you going to take a chan, are you going to stop and look at us? Are you going to watch the hawks that fly in the tree right now? That's my question for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I believe, in my presentation on the next item, I'll talk a little bit about the project that, I didn't get her last name, Dorothy.
Figueroa.
Figueroa, talked about.
Anyone else like to speak or make a comment?
My name is Thomas Tucker, Harder Packing Company, 1321 Harder Parkway, Uba City. I just want to add to Darren's list of developments up there, I noticed that Harder Estates North was on it, there was another seventy-four homes that we have on Harder Estates South, so that's a hundred and fifty homes readily available to be developed. In addition to that, we have oversized sewer to not only our needs and our developmental needs, but we've put massive amount of infrastructure in there to help service Terre Buena. We've been sitting on, our investment numbers, huge. Last time I counted, was two-point-eight million dollars in funds that we can't capitalize on, and we've been waiting fifteen years. So, we'd like to, doesn't include our acquisition cost, our holding cost, our taxes, our insurance, but I'm bumping up to over ten million dollars in holding cost, in acquisition cost. I want to develop, so I would look forward to anything that makes our property developable. I'd like to thank you for your time.
Thank you, Tom. Okay, anyone else? Nope. Darren, you have anything to add?
Nothing to add, I just appreciate the council's discussion this evening, and it appears to, council's direction is to continue moving forward and bring this back to the council as quickly as possible.
Absolutely, hopefully October. Great, thank you.